I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 16th, 2015 at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther is absent in excuse. Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell of Family of Faith Church. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. As we gather here in the chambers of our great city hall, we ask that you provide wisdom and leadership towards the needs of our fair city, Tarpon Springs. We ask that you bless those proceedings. We ask that you bless those providing patience to those seeking guidance and information. May you further bless those who may provide services, city engineers, city maintenance, city hall staff, water department, waste removal, environmental department, and of course, our first responders, our police force, our fire department, and paramedics. Heavenly Father, each time I honor and bring forth the word of our Lord here, there always seems to be some type of tragedy. Sadly, tonight, it's no different. Tonight, thirteen families' lives will never be the same. Thirteen young people traveled to our country for what they thought would be the adventure of their lives. Today, five have died. Eight are in very serious condition. Father, please comfort these families as they mourn a loss of their loved ones, children, and that. Please bless and keep members of our armed forces, especially those families grieving the total sacrifice given to protect the freedoms that we take for granted. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now-
Mayor, if we could note, tonight will be the first meeting that we will be live streaming, so hopefully, as we are testing it, we are live availability from our website, from our Facebook site. So, we've done a sample from the Planning and Zoning Meeting last night and the Code Enforcement Meeting last Thursday, so hopefully, we are-
Millions are watching.
We are live and millions are watching for the first time tonight, so.
Thank you. I will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this Seeing none, we will go to our proclamation, and the first is Rotary Day. This proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, where its Rotary International was founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, and is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, whereas the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs was established in 1927, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 33,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, and whereas the Rotary motto of service above self inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world, whereas the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs supports programs that strengthen the capacity of our community to improve the quality of life in Tarpon Springs, whereas the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs actively sponsors service projects that address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in Tarpon Springs, whereas all citizens in Tarpon Springs should join me in recognizing the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs for its 88 years of service to improving the human condition in our community. Now therefore, I, David O. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 16th, 2015, as Tarpon Springs Rotary Day. Not sure. Carry on. Mr. Belivers, you both can come. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much.
All right. We definitely thank Rotary for all that they do to help Tarpon be a better place. The next item that we have is item number two, is recognition of Sheriff Gol Terry, and this will be done by our own chief.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners. As you know, December 21st, 2014, was our darkest hour. One of our, one of TSPD's finest was killed in the line of duty, and we couldn't have done what we did without the help and assistance from a bunch of agencies and organizations. But one agency really stands out here that really stepped up and really helped us, and that's the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Bob Gol Terry. Sheriff, if you could please come up? On that night, Sheriff came up with his command staff and all his people, and he looked at me and goes, "What do you want?" And I looked at him, and I started thinking in my mind, I've been doing this for a long time, we're a small agency, there's no way we can take this criminal investigation, there's too much going on. We have a family we have to take care of, we have an officer we have to honor, we have officers that have been devastated by this event, the whole department and community. So, I looked at him and I said, "Can you do the criminal investigation, take the whole thing?" And he looked at me and said, "No problem." And what really struck me during this whole thing was, you know, there's something called duty, you know, we all do that, we have the badge, we do our duty, but Sheriff Gol Terry did something else. He put his heart into it, and everybody in TSPD saw that. It wasn't just about his duty. He really put his heart into it and stepped up and was there through this tragic event through the whole time, helping us, helping the family, helping our agency, to the point where his agency even covered our city while we went to the funeral so all of our officers can grieve. So, you know, with that, Sheriff, I can't say enough, but in our own way, we wanted to kind of honor you and the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department. The first thing I have here is a plaque, and it says, "In appreciation to Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, presented recognition of your generosity, support, and countless hours given to the Tarpon Springs Police Department following the line of duty death of Officer Charles R. Conditak Jr." Thank you, Chief Robert Kochan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
The other one we have is for you personally, and this plaque reads, "In appreciation to Pinellas County Sheriff Bob Gol Terry, presented a recognition of your generosity, support, and countless hours given to the Tarpon Springs Police Department following the line of duty death of Officer Charles R. Conditak Jr." Thank you, Chief Robert Kochan. So much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have one other small thing, but it's a challenge coin, and I believe several people were involved in this, but some of our officers can be really creative and they designed this, and I left one for all the commissioners and the city attorney or city manager clerk. But this is a challenge coin that honors Charlie, and you know, I want you to have it, and if anyone else wants it, your command staff, just let me know, we have some extra.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
If you want to say anything, please.
Well, you know, it's one of those things that, as we know, you know, words are tough, and still tough, you know, now, six months later. It was a tough time, tough night, tough period of time, but no tougher than for the family. We wouldn't have had it any other way. It wasn't just something that, it was our privilege, our honor, to be here and to help, to help Chief Kochan, to help the City of Tarpon Springs. That's what we're here for, and there isn't anything that we wouldn't have done and still wouldn't do to help out any other law enforcement member of our family, and we are glad to do it, and certainly appreciate you pausing to recognize us, but unnecessary, but I appreciate it because that's what we're here for. It is a family, it is a brotherhood, sisterhood, and we'll be here forever for everybody in Tarpon Springs and throughout the county. And again, thank you very much. I'm humbled by it, there's a lot of people have put forth a lot of effort. I'll be sure to share this with everybody within the sheriff's office who contributed significantly to bringing this to the conclusion we wanted, which was the person arrested and put in jail, so. But I thank you very much, Chief, for the recognition, and we're here for you then, and we'll be here for you for the future, and just like I know you'd be there for us, so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Commission for the recognition of the people of the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, so my thanks.
Once again, we really appreciate our officers and Officer Conditak's wife and daughter for being here. It means a lot to show our support, you know, we can't forget what they did for us. So, once again, Sheriff, thank you.
And I know you have to go there, Sheriff, but before you go, I just wanted to let you know on behalf of the city and myself personally that we do thank you. You did do more than what you had to do, and your officers too, and what the chief said about even serving the city of Tarpon while our officers went to the funeral was things that you really didn't have to do, but you wanted to do, and my thoughts is always that, you know, within any great organization, the leadership at the top is the most important, even though I know that you wasn't doing all of the work, but it was under your guidance that those men and women stepped forward for our citizens. So, I just want to tell you personally that I thank you on behalf of the City of Tarpon, and we thank all of the men and women that actually served during that process that we really appreciated. No, Chief didn't have to do it, I know that was something that he talked to me a while ago, he wanted to do because he wanted you to know, and those officers know that we truly appreciated what was happening on behalf of us, so thank you.
Lady Mayor, I'll pass.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? With that, we'll go to our consent agenda, and since we're doing something new, I guess I'll do something new, too, is that I'll just ask, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like further information about? If not, then Chair will entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Any public comments on the consent agenda? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next, we go to special consent, item number 12, administrative settlement of code enforcement lien, 417 Pineapple Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This request concerns the property at 417 Pineapple Street. This actually emanates not from a request made by the, through the ordinary channels, but as a result of litigation. This is a completed foreclosure. You've got the memorandum dated June 8, 2015, from Tom Trask. The property owner, in order to clear his title, has offered the city $2,500 to do that rather than go through the hassle and expense of a quiet title action. Based on that, I recommend approval of that settlement in the amount of $2,500. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do anyone have any questions for the attorney? None, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to settle for $2,500.
Second.
With that, we'll go to roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance and resolutions, item number 13, ordinance 2015-13, adoption of 2014 Florida Building Code, and this is second reading.
Ordinance 2015-13, in ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, by amending 6-1 to adopt the 2014 Florida Building Code, building, the 2014 Florida Building Code residential, the 2014 Florida Building Code existing building, 2014 Florida Building Code energy conservation, 2014 Florida Building Code accessibility, the 2014 Florida Building Code plumbing, 2014 Florida Building Code mechanical, 2014 Florida Building Code fuel gas, 2014 Florida Building Code fifth edition, test protocols for high-velocity hurricane zones, the National Electrical Code, NFPA 70, 2011 edition, by amending the 2010 Florida Building Code, Chapter 1, Administration, providing for severability and providing for an effective date, second reading of ordinance 2015-13 by title only. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on June 5, 2015.
Chair will entertain a motion then.
Move for approval. Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number 14 is ordinance 2015-15, adoption of Florida Fire Prevention Code, fifth edition, and this is first reading.
Ordinance 2015-15, in ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Section 7-12 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for adoption of the Florida Fire Prevention Code and providing for an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance 2015-15 by title only. Second reading will be held on July 7, 2015, and the ordinance will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on June 26, 2015.
Kenny, are you here to do this for the?
I have a question.
Go ahead, up there.
Can you just explain briefly what this is and the process?
Yes, I'm Kenny, Captain Fire Marshal, City of Tarpon Springs. This is the Florida Fire Code. It's a national code, but it's a Florida edition. That's the 2012 edition. It renews every three years, and what it does is spells out the fire code requirements of the, pretty much, of the establishment buildings and stuff like that, commercial structures, and the NFP 101 is the life safety code, which pertains to life safety issues in the same.
Anyone need any further information? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Thank you. The next item we have is miscellaneous, and that's item number 16, License to Encroach.
Mr. Mayor, we have item, sorry, item 15.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
No worries.
Item 15 is ordinance 2015-14, Land Development Code Amendments, Providing for Administrative Review of Alcohol License Permits.
Ordinance 2015-14, in ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 4, Special Regulations, Section 52, alcoholic beverages by providing for administrative review and issuance of conditional use permits, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Land Development Code of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. This is first reading of ordinance 2015-14 by title only. Second reading will be held on July 7, 2015. Ordinance published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on May 29, 2015, and June 26, 2015.
Good evening. Heather Erwler for the Planning Department, Mayor, Commissioners. There should be an addendum that was added to the staff report, and that's basically the, what happened last night at the Planning and Zoning Board outlined for you. But basically, this application is a request to allow for administrative review of alcoholic beverage licenses. It would continue to still be a conditional use. It would meet the same criteria. However, we are amending exactly what's required for, to be submitted as part of that application request to make it a little bit more stronger in what we get, so we actually get a consistent information. And at the Planning and Zoning Board last night, the, they recommended approval to you of the changes, 3-1, with this, and basically, they're, they were very pleased to see this because they're also happy to see that we're working to streamline planning, the permitting process as much as possible for folks to start new businesses in the city. There were some concerns from one particular member, and they did have some interest in discussing the appeal process. Essentially, this is an administrative process under this ordinance, and the appeal process that's laid out in our existing Land Development Code, Section 215, any appeals that would come in would be heard by the Board of Adjustment under those provisions. So, there is an appeal process to administrative decisions of any kind. This would be one of those types of administrative decisions. So, with that, staff is recommending approval, and so is the Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
The only one that I have, and I'm happy, I know that some individuals have talked about streamlining hills, this is the unthinkable. But what happens if planning and the city manager disagree?
That's a good question.
You know, I know that that should not happen ordinarily, but I mean, even with us, I mean, we're a body, but you know, we don't always agree, and, but there is an odd number so that, you know, majority prevails. I know that it might be ranking higher, but I, that's just a thought that came to my mind, is that what happens in those cases? If they ever happen, you know, to-
That's an excellent question, and I don't know that we've actually really addressed that. What happens if internally staff doesn't necessarily agree with the process? What then happens? Essentially, whatever decision would be rendered, the applicant would have the ability to appeal that decision through the appeal process. So, they could still have their, a board evaluate whether or not their conditional use is valid if they're not actually granted their license. So, it's not really addressed in these changes, but it is something that we could look at if there's an interest by the Board of doing that.
I just thought about, I know that, I think for us is that if there's a tie, then it fails, so I would say that if it's a tie, it's a denial.
Well, that's specifically addressed by your rules of procedure. I think that in the event of disagreement among administrative staff, there would need to be a decision made, I would suggest to you by the, probably by the higher-ranking member of the staff, and then, as Ms. Erwiler said, there is an appeal process already in place.
That's what I would say, too.
You know, my thoughts is that if that's the case, then the higher-ranking person shouldn't just, the only person named need to be there. Yes, Vice-
No, I simply wanted to congratulate staff, including Ms. Erwiler. I think this is an important ordinance, and we need to move forward with this.
Good question, Tarpan. Thank you. Just another comment, no question. I also wanted to commend staff. I look back in the backup and I see, I believe it was an initiative by Karen Lemons, Economic Development Director, that in 2013, there was a business survey conducted, and a lot of the businesses talked about streamlining. So, just wanted to commend you on actually putting forth the effort to actually do that and bring it to the support, so.
I'd love to say that it was all me, I'm just-
It was.
Standing up here answering the questions. But I do appreciate the accolades, that's great, thank you.
And again, going back to the other, I don't, I mean, really, it's one of those things, and we've talked about this on some of the other situations where we've talked about administrative doing, I mean, there's a set of guidelines. I guess there could be a circumstance where we disagree, but a measurement, I don't see how we disagree, the provisions of this, of when you grant it, I don't see a disagreement unless there's some semantic of inches and feet or things. So, this is one of those circumstances where it's really, if it's laid out and they meet the criteria set down, which is pretty clear criteria, then it should go through instead of having to go to a planning and zoning meeting, and then go to a commission meeting, and sometimes time and opening, as you know, from that business survey is important. So, while in other cases, if we move on with some of Ms. Lemons' others, we'll look at that about any conflicts, but this is kind of one that if you meet the guidelines, which are pretty clear, there shouldn't be any disagreement of if they are, and so I don't see any problems in that aspect either.
Move approval.
No, I also, I agree. I want to thank you guys, and this is just the first process of streamlining, I think, in this department, and as a business owner, I had my own experiences with the time, and time is money for business owners, so I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a note, we did this back, which we do in K, the reason why, of course, this was delayed with a lot of the situations we had in plane, this was delayed, so that is the reason why, and originally, we hadn't even thought of until it was noted to us that had to go to planning and zoning first. So, you know, this has been a long time coming from Ms. Lemons, so that is the reason why we did, we turned it over for the first reading right after the planning and zoning meeting and brought it back to usually wait to the next one, but we wanted to get the readings and the process going.
I know that's directed to me, thank you.
Well, I say, I know that this is one of those, I believe, that you talked about, we should look at, in a sense, the expedite, so you know, I thank all of the Commissioners for, you know, continuing to move this forward for staff in terms of doing it.
Well, since it was the only item, the Planning and Zoning Board did ask to do it next month, when we did it, we thanked the Planning and Zoning for coming for just one item because it had been delayed for so long.
Because I know that's on me.
No.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Did we get that?
Okay.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Miscellaneous items, item number 16, License to Encroach, 902-904, Live Oak.
Again, Heather, for the Planning Department. Again, this is a license to encroach agreement for Live Oak, 902-904. It's a business owner who has a building that basically has a zero lot line, and there's no room for additional parking. The buildings were built in 1973 and 1956, so they're old and they predate the zoning code. That being the case, he wants to use a parking lot that was partially paved over an existing right-of-way that's been used for the parking lot for a number of years. His long-term intention is to acquire additional properties in the area that are vacant and ask for those properties to be converted into a proper parking lot and probably vacate a portion of the right-of-way. Prior to that, he needs to have some time to do that assembly of land, so this is what this application is. It's basically asking for the right to use the area that was, has traditionally been used, but there was no formal process actually ever gone through to issue a license to encroach. So, they've been encroaching in the right-of-way, they're asking to come in and voluntarily go through this process, so it's cleaning up an issue that is outstanding out there. So, with that, this information was, has been all prepared, and the agreement is attached, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Good question, Tarpan.
No question. I'm okay with the application, but in the future, you prepared the staff report, correct?
Correct.
In the future, would you include, under property information, the applicant name?
Sure.
Thank you.
There are no further questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Well, I'm sorry, what was, Commissioner Tarepani, what, I couldn't hear you. What was your question?
In the past, Vice Mayor, under property information, we have the applicant's name, and I don't see it there tonight. You know, sometimes it'll appear as LLC or corporation name, or even an individual owner's name, but there's no applicant name.
Thank you.
Yep.
No other questions, then Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number 17, Appeal of Historic Preservation Board Decision, 170 Spring Boulevard.
Okay. There's actually some samples here that the applicant wanted us to pass around. They're of the actual hardy board, so you can feel the difference, but there's also brochures in there that kind of show the different types of materials they can have. These are just some samples that it comes in some, several different finishes. However, this is an appeal for 170 North Spring Boulevard to a previous certificate of decision for, certificate of approval for Heritage Preservation Board, and there was a number of requirements that they actually had asked for, for replacing this building. So, that being the case, the only issue that's actually being appealed here is the finish for, well, not so much the finish, but the actual product or material that's going to be used on the wood siding. And essentially, what the applicant is asking for is the right to use the hardy board. Hardy board has been used in houses in this area, matter of fact, on the adjacent property, however, and I basically have prepared all of the information, their minutes are in here from the previous, from the previous meeting for the decision, along with the certificate of approval and the applicant's case, and the applicant can speak specifically to what their request is. But that's really what, all that I have is staff for this particular application. If you have questions, I can try to answer.
Well, the only question that I had, and I didn't understand, I didn't see it in here, is why they said no. I said, they said no, but I didn't see any real reason. It seemed to me, from everything I've done and for research, is that, you know, this is actually a better material to use than wood, will last longer, or us that. The drawbacks seem like it's harder to put up, so I assume it takes more time, energy, effort from the applicant. energy, effort from the applicant to do, so I didn't understand the why. I understand no, but, you know, I always look at, there should be a reason as to that, and I didn't see that in it.
And basically, I can't really speak to that because the minutes are all that I have from that meeting, since I wasn't actually employed by the city when this meeting went on. I don't really know the justification. The minutes are all that I have to build their appeal based on, and, and that information's not in the minutes, why there was a prohibition to the, it's not really well-defined there. They just required wood versus hardy board. And again, the applicant could speak a little bit better to this because he was actually at the meeting, so.
Well, he knows why.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. My name is David Brandon with Brandon Construction, in our 33rd year of business here in Pinellas County, and I am the construction manager representing Mr. and Mrs. John Burns. They are the applicant. We're not sure why, but we were pretty certain that we would be allowed, we were approved in the site next door, 164 Spring Boulevard, to use the hardy, and we expected that that would be the case, and this one, and it was just, there was a, I think, two of the members were absent that night, the attorney was absent that night, and Ms. Monahan made the suggestion that, that we'd be required to use the wood siding. That's not protocol, and many, most of our historic preservation districts throughout the country now, not only have approved hardy, but they're, they're marketing that they're using hardy, and they're suggesting that to business owners and private residents that own structures in these districts, to use that as a means of, you know, more durability in our exterior maintenance. There is a study out now, it originated in Mississippi, and this is by the USDA Forest Service. They've produced a table, and they list the siding, like are on these historic homes, if we were to put back pine today, of having a lifespan of less than 10 years, and they don't recommend it for that use. 140 years ago, when these homes were sited, pine was a different material. It was a tighter grain, a higher, what we call F sub B, that's a bending radius, that's a structural term, which if you look in structural timber tables now, our, our structural allowances for pine materials are far less than they were even 30 years ago. So it's just good prudence to use it. I, I felt like this is a process, we should come to this board and ask for this appeal, because I couldn't in good conscience go out there and put pine siding on a client's home, knowing that in less than 10 years, they're going to be back doing the same thing again. So we're just trying to create what it says on my website, Structures of Permanence. The Burns also should be noted have made significant economic development impacts in the city, since they purchased their first property there at 164 Spring. I've just, I've watched their decision-making, it's always been in the best interest of the neighborhood, and I think that we're making some really nice improvements out there, and respectfully request that you approve this appeal.
Thank you.
And I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Starbend, any questions?
Uh, no, no question. Just a comment and motion.
Yeah, if you want to comment.
Yeah, I mean, my, my comment would just, number one, to, I understand why people make different decisions. I understand that when there's a mix-up on the board, you know, you tend to go in one direction where you may have gone in another direction the previous time, but taking into consideration that the Burns received approval for a new construction home next door to this home, and I know that there's been other homes in the historic district and in the area that have been granted approval to use the hardy board product, aside from the fact that it's a superior product and all kinds of arguments can be made, I would say that we, as a board, my motion would be to recommend approval for use of this hardy board product.
Is there a second, uh, comments?
No, I just want to make a comment, and I, I'm not prepared to make a motion or second a motion or anything like that, but I, I just want to say, regardless of the direction that we go tonight, I, I do want to express my appreciation to the work of the advisory boards, and I know they take their work seriously, and I don't want them to be frustrated by whatever it is that we do tonight. I, I think after looking at the evidence this evening, it's, it's possible that maybe we should move in a different direction from where that board went, but I, I do want to express my appreciation for the work of the Heritage Preservation Board.
And as I look for a second, and I'll just say, this is that, you know, I respect all the boards, and I respect their decisions, and I think that, you know, they are that, they are advisory boards. The reason I ask why they said no, is that I think that when you say no, you should base it upon something, and that's what we should look at in terms of our decision, what do they base no on? If they base no on something that's logical, reasonable, has some merit, then I can understand that, but if they said no, and from all the research that I did, you know, there's no real difference for its appearance, it's, it's a better product, the rest of that, product that we're using in the same area, I, I can't see why, you know, the no vote, but that's just my thoughts in terms of this situation, but Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I agree, and, and also, I, I do appreciate our boards, but looking at our background materials, there are other instances where we've used that material in town in historic preservation area, and I, I did some research, I see that Key West is using for their historic preservation areas, and as you mentioned, other areas are doing the same, so I didn't understand the reason for no either, but...
We were confused, and to Mr. Terpenny's point, on April 7th, case number 1416, hardy siding was approved, and again, on September 8th, case number 1449, hardy siding was approved, so we, we were pretty sure that wasn't an issue, and we were previously approved in the same district for the house at 164, so it was a little bit of a surprise, but that's, that's why we're here tonight.
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor, that, I don't know if we got a second?
A second.
Any public comments on this item? Come forward, state your name, address for the record. Give it up to four minutes.
Hi, I'm Vicky Russo, Building Development Supervisor, and I do want to say that the hardy board siding does have Florida product approval. It's a durable material, it's a good material, and I am for this material because it will meet the requirements of the Florida Building Code, and that's what I look for when I do my plan review drawings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
I missed part of the presentation, but name's Jacob Carr, 146 Cleveland Place, just here in favor of the hardy board siding also. The property in question tonight is a property, I lived there in a loft two owners ago throughout college, and I helped maintain the property. At that time, that was probably 10 years ago or so, that is, that owner had a lot of issues with the boards rotting continuously around the house, so seeing the products that have come out now with hardy board, I, I think it's a great aspect to maybe look into as a whole, relook at maybe our historic district, and maybe look at some of the guidelines to see and include hardy board in those guidelines, so then something like this in the future won't come back up also, but I'm in favor of it also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do another public comments, roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, something that Mr. Carr brought up. I don't know what direction, Mr. Lacorice, that we would potentially ask staff to look at in terms of the hardy board as a, an approved product within the historic district, but it's certainly something that I think is worthy to look at if we could list that, or determine if we want to list that. We've heard from a member of our staff in the building department, so I think that that's probably a wise decision, so we don't run into this again.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
With that, we go to item number 18, Ratification of Appointment, Planning and Zoning Directive.
Well, obviously, I didn't expect to be back with you this soon with another recommendation. As most of you know, our former director, Steve Crencia, left for out of state because of an opportunity, a job that his wife couldn't refuse in Arizona, so it left us at the point where we had no director again, and principal planner, who you seen tonight, who came in and got one week of training and then took over the reins. As we went through the normal process of advertising, looking at the advertising, and looking at the people who were coming in, I was able to watch Heather and watch her performance and how she handled things, and again, you're someone who came in for one week, got one week of review from the planning director, and then essentially, again, with the help of Karen Lemmons, took over and operated the planning. I think she came up with some situations where I was able to see, and I know some of you on this board has been to some things and seen her and how her and Karen work, they've seen her ability to look at the situation and, you know, assist the citizens as well as they can withstand the rules, and it just, as the process was going on, to select the new planning director, whoever else I would have got in would have had a bunch of unknowns, and I was sitting here, day after day, watching the qualities that we would continue to mold, but was well along the way to be able to operate the way you as a commission wanted. You made it very clear about planning, building, and the way you wanted us to operate, to deal with the citizens, to work with people, developer, homeowners, and she in that very short time has shown me, and I've been able to see, that she is a person who can do that. So I would like to give her the opportunity and offer, and I have offered her the job as planning director, and obviously, this is a position where I must get ratified by you as the commission, but I think, the known that I've seen, I think she'll meet all those qualities that you've demanded of me to have in my staff, and I am confident that she can carry those out from the short time I've seen her and what she did, being thrown into a hornet's nest of a position, and working together, getting everything going, and her and Karen are a dynamic team, and hopefully, she'll be able to hire a principal planner, and we'll have a full team, and we'll be rolling again. So my recommendation is, is for you to ratify my appointment of Heather as the prince, as the planning director.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
As much as I am offended that the city manager called this a hornet's nest, I, I will still make this motion. I, I move for approval of the agenda item, more specifically, I move for approval of ratification of appointment of Heather Erwiler as Planning and Zoning Director.
Yes, second.
I'll second, and I just want to say how pleased I am by the city manager's decision, and also, based on what I've seen, how much confidence I have in Heather as well as the planning director.
Any further comments? Any public comments? Then roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, welcome aboard again.
Thanks. If I could just have a couple of minutes, I just want to thank you, the commission, mayor, city manager, and every per staff member here who has just been awesome in my transition here, because it was a tough, it was a tough road, but we're getting, it's been a month, and we're getting everything on track, so it's, we're going in the right direction. So this has been, this is a great time, and I'm very excited to be part of the team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our agenda. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Attorney?
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I've been asked to relay a message to all of you from the Florida League of Cities. Last week, weekend before last, I went to the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials run by the league down in Fort Lauderdale. That's a training, a weekend training session for newly elected municipal officials. They also operate the Advanced Institute, which some of you may have, may have been to, but at the end of the conference, the director of it shared with me that there are 700 newly elected officials in Florida every year, and of those 700, the League of Cities Conference used to draw about 500 to 600 of those, obviously, that draw is pretty good. They believe it's a result of the economy over the years, but that number has now dwindled to about 100, 150 every year. They do two sessions, one in October and one in June, and so they asked me to relate to you that if that, the decline in attendance was due to any kind of budgetary concerns, et cetera, that hopefully, that the cities could find it within their budgets to send those folks who wish to go, to enhance their skills as newly elected officials, and to see their way clear to do that. I got a lot out of it. There, there's another session scheduled for Tampa in October, so in as much as travel and hotel and lodging is a concern, and perhaps it can be done on a, on a, on a day travel basis, though I think there's a lot of benefit to the collegiality of the, of staying with the folks, but in any event, they asked me to pass that message on to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Thank you. I don't have any, I think everybody here, I believe, has been to it, so it's, whoever might precede us, is, you know, it's always been open, I think, to go if people want to, so. With that, City Manager?
No, again, we're, we're trying to get the information out about the live stream meetings. We're very happy to begin that, so even if you're at home and you see an item and you have enough time to jump in the car and get down here, you can see what's going on. If you want to come speak, you'll be able to speak. Again, if you look on our website, look at the links, again, we're, we're also working on converting our website, so we'll be having a new website, but right now, it's on the old one. I think it's easy to link. I think today, we're linking our Facebook page, where you can link right to the live stream. Again, when I was in budget advisory meeting Thursday, I was sitting on my phone, watching the, the, um, code enforcement meeting below that was going on live downstairs, I was watching that as we were doing the budget advisory meeting upstairs. I was able, this morning, obviously, I was somewhere else watching something else last night, but I did, first thing in the morning, watched the planning zoning meeting last, this morning, so I could see about the one item that we were turning around, so, and hopefully, everybody watched live tonight and can see, or if you get home from dinner at nine o'clock, you can click on right then and watch this meeting at nine o'clock tonight and, and see it live, so I think, for our citizens and everything, it's something we've asked for, and gives more accessibility to government and what's going on in a faster frame of time, so. Next thing coming, we'll be bringing out the website within the next couple of months, and with the enhancement we had talked about before in another presentation, we're working very hard on that right now, so something to look forward to.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Starbend?
I just want to remind everybody about the after, or the out-of-school bash coming up at Sunset Beach.
Thank you. You know, I'll just say to some, they might understand, others won't, you know, there's a couple of Wildcats in the audience, but they really are just kittens. With that, we'll...
The captain would like to say something.
Major?
Major to captain.
You see, that's what happened when you don't say it early, when you was the chief.
You wanted me to comment on this?
No, no.
I thought you wanted to comment.
No, I was asking him a question.
No, I just said the city attorney was looking into it.
Oh, my apologies.
You want me to say something?
I'm just trying to make sure I can see the clock.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you. Don't do that.
We'll adjourn this meeting at 7:18.
What's going on with that? Okay.
What's that?
What in the world? Thank you.
It was. You never know.
And...